Good evening, everyone. Welcome to a public hearing of the Newark Central Planning Board under the Open Public Hearing Act of 1973, also known as the Sunshine Law. In accordance with New Jersey Public Laws of 1975, Chapter 231, Section 5, adequate notice of the hearing has been provided by notifying the Newark Star-Ledger and Jersey Journal newspapers. Also, the schedule of regular hearings and conferences of the Newark Central Planning Board has been posted on a designated bulletin board in the basement of City Hall and filed in the office of the city clerk during January 2021. In addition to adequate notice under the Open Public Meetings Act, electronic notice of this remote public meeting, as is permitted under the NJSA 1049.3, and was placed on the City of Newark website. Members of the public can make public comments by audio or by audio and video, as permitted by the Zoom Electronic Communication Platform. Now, while in this Zoom meeting, press on Raise Hand on the bottom-left corner of the computer screen or mobile device. Raise Hand allows participants to notify the host that they would like to speak without interrupting them. If you are calling in, press *9 on your telephone to raise your hand. The Central Planning Board will be mindful of the number of items on the agenda and will move as expeditiously as possible to complete the agenda. However, due to the amount of development requiring board review and the complexity of projects, it may not be possible to hear every item if the meeting runs later than 11:00 PM. In the event that the agenda is not completed by 11:00 tonight, the board will finish hearing the applications that are in the process of listening to, but no new application will be called after that item is complete. Any applications that were not heard by that time will be rescheduled to the earliest available date, which will be announced on a record if possible. In addition to adequate notice on the Open Public Meetings Act, electronic notice of this remote public meeting, as is permitted, was placed on the City of Newark website. The meeting of the Central Planning Board will now come to order. Please call a roll.
Commissioner Good?
Here.
Commissioner Jordan?
Yeah.
Co-Chair Witter?
Here.
Commissioner Timmons?
Here.
Commissioner James?
Yeah.
Commissioner Oliver? Commissioner Purdy and Commissioner Amador are absent. Chair Richardson?
Here.
Okay, I think Commissioner Purdy just joined us, so I'm gonna mark him as absent.
Yeah, I see him. First item is CPB 21-91. Are the applicants available?
Can the applicant's team raise their hand so we can bring you into the meeting? Thank you. Okay, we have everyone from the applicant side in the meeting.
Is the attorney present?
Yes, Mr. Calvin Souter.
Okay, let's get started. Let's get your people sworn in and bring your first witness, however you're gonna start this thing.
So I just, I just want to be clear before we jump into all that. The first one is the courtesy review for Newark Police and Fire Training.
Correct.
Okay.
All right, so you're gonna do the presentation?
Yes, yes, thank you.
Let's get started.
As you all know, my name is Calvin Souter. I represent PF Training Investors LLC in its application to develop the Newark Police and Fire Training Academy at 695-715 Bergen Street. We all may remember that particular school. The city has decided that it would be building a three-story police and fire training academy with a parking deck attached to it. Pursuant to rule, we are here seeking a courtesy review of this project, as it is a municipal project here. We have received the December 13, 2021, planning review, a courtesy review. We have taken into consideration all of its suggestions and comments, and we believe, by and large, we will be able to comply. However, the only outstanding items that we want to just note that would be different is the Police Department, at this particular time, having indicated how many electronic stations they would like at this particular facility, and also there will be no capability of putting solar panels on the roof. As this particular project, the roof will be parking here, so they're maximizing this particular site. So we, I do have Eric Moore here with me. He's actually in the same room as me. If you'd like to hear from the actual developer on behalf of the city, and the engineer for the project is on as well, Todd Hay. If there are any questions.
Commissioner Purdy, you're not, you're not on mute, sir. All right, this is just a courtesy review. If you want to bring Todd Hay in to explain a little more detail briefly, you can. But it's just, it's a courtesy review, so.
Right, we, I offer them just in case there are any questions, but.
Are there any questions from the board?
Thank you.
Any of the board professionals, Joffa Canty, anybody have any questions?
Can we see the plans?
Yeah.
Excuse me?
Co-Chair Witter says she wants to see the plans.
We have submitted a complete package to the city, so you all should have received the full planning packet for this project.
The public that's on the call hasn't seen them.
Okay, let me, I will endeavor to pull that up now.
Let me say the latest things, sir. Got it.
Sure.
Give me a second, Ken.
Would it be helpful if I pulled them up for everybody?
I'm just pulling it up now. I do apologize. Let me, I've, you know, I'm, I'm not as technologically savvy as I would care to be sometimes.
Got it, Ken?
I just had so much open, it's, I was still, oh.
You don't mean you said?
Calvin, allow, John, if you're having trouble, man.
Yeah, I just had a bunch of stuff ready to go for the next application, so I don't want to pull the wrong thing up right now. So, John, if you can pull that up, I would greatly.
Mr. Barry, please pull, pull up what you have.
I'm on mute. This is the architectural set. Hold up, it's a big file. So that's, there we go. Can we see the cover sheet here?
Yes.
Okay, good. So that's, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that's a view of the project from Bergen Street. That's the architectural rendering.
Correct.
Okay. Are there any particular plan sheets that?
I think this is probably the best.
Yeah.
You know, I don't, I don't know if we really want to get into the inner workings of this particular facility.
No, I just wanted folks to see what it would look like.
Is that helpful, Commissioner Witter?
Yes, thank you so very much.
You can stop sharing, John, thank you. So if the commissioners have no questions, none of the board professional have any questions, are there any questions from the public?
If you're joining us by phone, please press *9. Otherwise, you can press the Raise Hand feature if you have any questions about this project. I do have one raised hand. Chair Richardson, I'm gonna bring that person in.
Yes.
Ask questions?
Ms. Pallavi got disconnected. Hold on, give me a minute.
Pallavi, are you with us?
Yes, I switched Wi-Fi. Okay, thank you. Do you want me to take a roll call awarding? Are we ready?
No, we have, we have people from the public that can't get in. No one else is administrator.
Okay, got it, guys. Sorry about that. Let me bring them in. Okay. Okay, we have Kay Harris.
All right, and this is a courtesy review?
Yes. Just to claim the public, everyone will get three minutes to speak. So we have a person with the screen name Kay Harris. So Kay Harris, if you can unmute yourself and start your video, and we will be giving you three minutes to ask your question.
Okay, my name's Kevin Harris.
Mr. Harris, I can't see you on the screen. Do you have the ability to put yourself on the screen, or?
No.
Do you solemnly swear the testimony? Right, do you solemnly swear the testimony you're about to give this board shall be truthful?
Yes.
Thank you. Please state your name and your address for the record.
My name is Kevin Harris, 120 Parkview Terrace, Newark, New Jersey.
Thank you. Please proceed.
Okay, let me ask, um, with the project that you're talking about, will this be a prevailing wage job?
Mr. Harris, ask, ask, ask all your questions and then we'll have the attorney.
Okay, all right, all right. And who is the, um, the four projects awarded to Brandywine for the Public Safety Department? Um, wait a minute, come on. The Safety Department, all right, this, okay, forget it. Forget that one. Will Local 3 members be working on this project from Newark? And that's it.
Mr. Souter?
Thank you. So will this be a prevailing wage job? The short answer to that is yes. And we are currently negotiating with various unions, including Local 3, about the actual work that will be taking place on a job. But it'd be premature for me to tell you that Local 3 would specifically be on a job, as there's no current agreement with Local 3. But I can tell you, we will be meeting with them, and our desire would be to figure out a way to work with Local 3, specifically to bring Norcas onto this particular job site in all four of the public safety projects that were announced.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other?
Yes, there's another person with the screen name Radek Kowick.
Yes.
And I apologize if I pronounced it incorrectly. So, person with the screen name.
Okay, hold on a second.
Kowick.
Mr. Harris, you're, you're.
All right, we'll just give Mr. or Ms. Radek Kowick just a few minutes, moments.
Ms. Pallavi, Ms. Pallavi. Shit, mute Mr. Harris.
Okay, yes, he's muted now, yeah.
All right.
Again, as a courtesy, he's muted your mic if you're not speaking. Mr. or Ms. Radek Kowick, if you can please unmute yourself and start your video. We'll give you a few moments. Otherwise, we would have to move, move forward. Thank you.
So, please raise your right hand, Mr. Kowick. Do you solemnly swear this testimony you're about to give this board shall be truthful?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Please state your name and your address.
My name is Radek Kowick. I live in Sutton Island, but my job, it's 1122 Bristol Mountainside, New Jersey.
Go ahead.
Mrs. Souter, with which laborers union you are actually talking about the job? You just like a couple of minutes ago.
Is that, is that all?
You're, you're talking, definitely it's not by union, definitely it's not the building trades. So just what I just clarified with you, with which labor unions you're talking about?
Is Lino Santiago, does Lino Santiago not represent the building trades in Essex County?
Ah, Legos Santiago, yes.
From mountainside.
Yes.
So if me speaking to him, would that not count for me speaking to the building trades?
Ah, yes, sir, that's true.
Okay, I spoke to him earlier today, and I spoke to him several months ago. And the conversation that I had with him then, and I have, that I have with him several months ago, and I have with him today, was that we will keep him informed of these projects, right? But I believe.
There isn't a reason you just spoke with him today? Not before, like a couple of weeks ago? And maybe there is any reason why you spoke with him today?
He, he has my telephone number because I speak to him.
Hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on. Hold on, Mr. Souter. What we're not gonna do is go back and forth. If you have some questions, ask the question. What Mr. Souter just said, he talked to him several months ago, and then he talked to him again today.
Okay, so, let me, so let me, let me ask the question. I do believe, I do represent the Local 3 Laborers Union. There is, there's gonna be many different jobs covering by the, but, no, represented by the company who you represented. There's any, is the job as prevailing wage project or not?
Per the chairman's request, I'm gonna let you get your questions out, and then I'll answer your questions once you put all your questions out there.
Okay, so, the first question is, is the job is a prevailing wage project? The second question is, is the job, it's, why is the job, it's not subject to the PLA? The second thing, why the job? Why the building, what are we talking about right now? We're selling for the $10. That was a $10 per, you know, for the, for the property.
What did he say?
So if the, if the, if the, there is any local union three members.
Can you repeat that last question? I wasn't able to understand you.
I did ask if it's true, the property was sold to the company Brandywine for the $10 per hour, $10 for the property.
Mr. Kowick, your three minutes are up.
Okay, so I stated before that this is a prevailing wage job, right? So there was no need for this particular type of development to have a PLA. Although being the head of the building trades, I'm sure you're aware that PLA's in the state of New Jersey were recently found unconstitutional by the state. The, as for the cost per, for the property, I think it is, it is worthy to note that ultimately, the city will continue to own this piece of property. So there's really no need for us to get into the ultimate financing of it. But Brandywine will not be taking over ownership in a traditional sense like we would in, you know, in some other properties, right? This is a city development. The city is building this building per the city specs on city ground, and it will remain that way. So I think the question of what the building cost is immaterial unless we're going to double tax our citizens here in Newark, which I believe is unnecessary.
That, I do, I do, I kind of disagree with you because paying for the people for the, you know, 15, 20 bucks per hour, it's not, that's something where it's affordable for the people in, people in Newark. So.
Mr. Chairman.
So I do really believe, and please let me, please let me just finish. Maybe I do not believe in, leave in Newark, but I spent 15 years in Newark, working for the Newark people. And, and I do believe the people from Newark, they should be able to work for the good-paying jobs, not just 15, 20 bucks per hour.
Radek, I think he said that it's gonna be a prevailing wage.
Prevailing wage doesn't mean that people's gonna be paying prevailing wage. So if the city's gonna just make some kind of.
Radek, Radek, your, your time, your time is up, sir. Your time is up. Ms. Schindler, is any other?
No, at this time, there are no more questions from the public.
Commissioner Jordan?
I just want to ask the question, is the corporation that is doing this project aware of the payroll taxes that are responsible in the city of Newark?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Hearing now, I need a motion.
Motion, move.
Back and.
Please consider to just, you know, just postpone that, that, that motion.
Ms. Ms. Mr. Radek, please mute yourself. You had your time to speak, right? We don't go back and forth on this board. That's why we asked you to put all your questions out. And this is a, you gotta understand what this is. This is a courtesy review. They don't even really have to come to this board. It's just a courtesy. Moved by Commissioner Purdy and second by Co-Chair Witter, is that right?
Yes.
Okay. Commissioner Good?
Yes.
Commissioner Jordan?
Yes.
Co-Chair Witter?
Yes.
Commissioner Purdy?
Yes.
Commissioner Timmons?
Yes.
Commissioner James?
Yes.
Commissioner Oliver?
Yes.
Chair Richardson?
Yes. The courtesy review has been approved. Good luck. All right.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it, and I thank you on behalf of Brandywine, as well as the city.
Next application is CPB 21-84450 Broad Street and 5-55 Division Street. Mr. Souter, you're up again.
Yes, give me one second, please.
If there are more members in this team, please raise your hand so I can bring you into the meeting. Thank you.
Pallavi, I think you brought in a good portion of them the last time.
There are raised hands, there are a couple of raised hands. And I'm guessing that they are your team members. And if you are a member of the public, this is not the time to raise your hand because I do see some people raise their hand. When the session is open to the public, you will be given an opportunity to join the meeting. I think you have everyone, Mr. Souter.
Great, thank you.
Okay.
All right, let's get your first witness sworn in.
Thank you all for hearing this application. Again, my name is Calvin Souter. I'm the legal counsel for Mayork LLC, Mayork Urban Renewal LLC, on CPB 21-84. This is a project that we've all around the city and around the state, frankly, have been looking forward to for some time now, and I'm grateful to be bringing it before you all today. So this project is a mixed-use development at the, at the former Bear Stadium site. It consists of nine phases with a total of 4,200 residential units, 100,000 square feet of commercial space, and approximately 1,998 parking spaces to be located at 450 Broad Street or 5-55 Division Street. This, this application has been properly noticed in the Star-Ledger and our various state affiliates, state and county affiliates throughout the state. We've provided our, our notices and proof of notice to the planning board to substantiate saying, so that there's proper jurisdiction underneath this, with, with this board today. We have a nine-phase project. We're asking this board today to provide us with preliminary. We're asking this board today to provide us with preliminary site plan approval for all nine phases. However, we're seeking just a a preliminary and final site plan approval for phase one. I'm gonna take a little bit of time to go through each one of those phases and then introduce you to my team here today. Phase one of the project is consists of two eighteen-story buildings, each building containing a total of two hundred and ninety-nine units for a total of five hundred and ninety-eight units between the two buildings. One story, there's also a one-story building connecting these buildings together that provides for twenty-one thousand eight hundred and sixty-one square feet of commercial space and fifteen thousand one hundred and eighty-two square feet of amenity space and structured underground parking. You'll hear the term structured underground parking utilized with with each phase. Um, this is a unique site in that we will be building a podium style for all buildings. So there'll be underground parking, uh, similar to what we we see in New York. Um, and it's going to be all eleven buildings built on a portion of a podium. Um, as for phases two through nine, the applicant is seeking preliminary.
Souter, I'm sorry to interrupt, but can you share some visuals as you describe the project? Uh, I'm getting a few comments from the public to see the plans.
We are going to, as as soon as I give this intro, we are going to have our architect put up the the plans and walk us through this thing in great detail.
Got it, thank you.
Thank you. Phase two of the project is almost identical to phase one. It consists of two eighteen-story buildings with the one-story retail amenity space between them. This phase is a total of five hundred and ninety-eight units or two hundred and ninety-nine units per residential building with eighteen thousand seven hundred and twenty-six square feet of commercial space and eighteen thousand five hundred and thirty-nine square feet of amenity space and the structure parking below ground. Phase three will consist of an eighteen-story building with the one-story retail and amenity space and continued underground parking. This phase includes three hundred and thirty-nine residential units and twenty-five thousand forty-eight square feet of commercial space and sixteen thousand ninety square feet of amenity space. Phase four will consist of one eighteen-story building that consists that connects to the retail amenity space in phase three. This building will contain two hundred and ninety-nine units and underground parking as well. Phase five consists of one eighteen-story building with a hundred and eighty-one units and seven thousand three hundred and twenty-two square feet of amenity space. Phase six consists of one thirty-seven-story tower identified on the plans as Tower B and a continuation of the structure parking below grade. This building contains six hundred and forty-eight units, four thousand seven hundred and thirty-nine square feet of commercials, square feet, uh, and five thousand four hundred and seven of of amenity spaces. Phase seven consists of a nineteen-story building containing three hundred and twenty-six residential units, eight thousand six hundred and sixty-two square feet of commercial space and thirteen thousand five hundred and twenty-seven square feet of amenity space. Phase eight consists of a thirty-seven-story building containing five hundred and ninety-eight units, twelve thousand six hundred and ninety-nine square feet of commercial space and five thousand seven hundred and twelve square feet of amenity space. Finally, phase nine consists of another thirty-seven-story building containing six hundred and thirteen units, eight thousand two hundred and sixty-five square feet of commercials space and six thousand two hundred and twenty-nine square feet of amenities, of of amenity space. The proposed use is permitted under both the Broad Street redevelopment plan as well as the Newark Riverfront redevelopment plan. And as far as affordable housing is concerned, the site will consist of two hundred affordable housing units. We are requesting five variances for excessive front yard setback, excessive front yard step back, uh, excessive side yard setback, insufficient front yard setback, as well as other insufficient setbacks. It's just a reminder, this is over nine phases, so there is some overlap in the, 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 the in the variances being requested. We also have a series of ten waivers that we are are asking for, uh, mainly to do with light um and and trees. So overall, I think the variance relief that we are seeking on this application uh is minimal to say the best. As of now, we've received both the Central Planning Board report of December seventh as well as the December tenth engineering report. Um, we are, we are yet to be uh to obtain a water and sewer report or a traffic report. Uh, in support of this application tonight, uh, we have with us uh, Jack Klugman, who is the owner of the property, owner representative of the property, the engineer Eric Baloo from Insight Engineering, architect Ian Batter from Ian Batter Architects, our traffic engineer Lou Luccio, and our planner John McDonough. Um, all are here to testify tonight. Uh, and with that, and I know everyone's eagerly awaiting to see a rendering of this, so I will be calling my first witness, which is Ian Batter, who will be showing, sharing his screen and showing us a rendering of this site. Ian?
Hi, good evening.
Good evening, Ian.
Mr. Beck.
I think we lost Mr. Beck momentarily, Mr. Chair.
Okay, uh, Ian, can you raise your right hand? You promised to tell the truth and the whole truth.
I do affirm, thank you.
Say, state your first name, spell your last name, and your affiliation for the record.
My first name is Ian. My last name is Bader, B A D E R. Um, and I'm an architect licensed in New Jersey and um the design architect for the project.
Ian, is your license currently active?
Yes.
Uh, can you give us a brief synopsis of your educational background?
Um, I was educated in South Africa. I have a bachelor's and master's degree in architecture. Um, my professional experience sort of ranges um through pretty much all building types and um is international. So many of the projects that I've designed are here in the United States, but um we have projects also completed in Europe, in Paris, in Copenhagen. And currently, my firm has a number of projects under design and development in the center of Jerusalem at a very significant um urban design scale. And a number of the projects have received awards, various.
Thank you. You you're accepted by the board. Please continue.
Thank you.
Thank.
If I may share my screen. So, um, first of all, we're very pleased um to have the opportunity to be working with you and and be part of a very well-qualified um professional team. Say at the outset that our owner, our client, has given us a free hand in terms of designing what we believe is the most appropriate project um for this site and for New York. We're also very gratified um to be part of the um ongoing development of um New York and um part of what we believe will be a very exciting future for the city. So the site, as you know, is very substantial, and it is strategically located, as you see here, off Broad Street and faces onto the Makata Highway. It is adjacent to the Broad Street Station, which has a direct link to um Penn Station um here in New York City. Um, on the south side of the site is the Broad Street, the Bridge Street um road with its um bridge across the Seig River. So the site is um very significant, and um from our point of view, presents a number of very good design opportunities. Um, I would like to say at the outset that we have been very focused on making a project which is woven into the fabric of New York, that it should become an extension of um the city and provide significant amenity, not only to the people um accommodated on the site, but to the city at large. Um, and as you see here in the foreground is um Broad Street and the Seig River in the background, Manhattan in the far distance. And this is a view looking the other way, looking east at the site, um, which is in two pieces. The northernmost um component is north of a street called Division, and the bulk of the site is to the south of Division. In the foreground here is the Makata Highway. And this is a, just a direct down aerial photograph of the two components, the northern component and the southern component. And so our plan will be um for preliminary site plan approval for all the phases, which are distributed across both parcels, as well as final site plan approval for phase one. And so here you see the scheme laid into the site, and um the most significant component of the design is the central garden space. And in principle, our architecture is intended to emphasize the open space between the buildings to emphasize landscape and to um be uh directly um integrated into the street pattern of um the city around. And for that reason, um, our client has allowed us to basically place the majority of the parking effectively below grade so that the buildings are not on a podium as the, as will be experienced from the Broad Street side, but are really on grade, and the garden spaces, the sidewalks, the landscape elements will all be integrated into um the fabric of the city. And this is very significant because of the number of parking spaces, approximately two thousand, that will be accommodated on the site. Um, you will not actually be exposed to any of the accommodation of the parking um as you experience the um side from the downtown area. On the north lot, the parking is above grade, but it's jacketed by a series of buildings, so again, there will be no exposure of the parking structure on this side um to the city. Makata Highway is lower, and therefore there is some exposure of the um parking structure on that side that you will see illustrated. So essentially, the building, the project um is in a series of um independent buildings um which are arrayed around the central garden. On the south side, they are actually architecturally arranged in pairs um in some instances, and on the north side, um more independently. The um majority of the buildings are um eighteen stories tall um as you see over here, and then there are three more iconic tower buildings in the corners of the site, which are each um thirty-eight stories high. In terms of access, vehicular access to the site, Division Street is our primary um source of access, and so we have access to the north lot over here and to the south lot, um access um in the northeast corner. Additionally, you'll see described a future access from Makata Highway to the lowest level of the parking. Um, there's an additional point of access from Broad Street on the north this corner. You know, you see a three-dimensional depiction of the project in the context. Um, and um these are the um foreground buildings, which, as you see here, very much match the prevailing scale of the downtown buildings. And additionally, the buildings in the corners, iconic buildings, are um more in sync with the tall buildings that are being planned for the downtown area. And this is a view looking across the river at the development, and um you can see that the podium um component is very much integrated into the um riverside landscape, and then the series of buildings um arrayed um behind that. And again, the emphasis of the open space between um the various individual building structures and a view from um Broad Street looking down um Division. And um we should mention that regarding some of the variances, um step back and back, um, this is a holistic um concept, and so um the requirements um for specific setbacks, we believe, are not particularly pertinent to what we're doing, because we are providing a great deal of sky exposure and openness between the various buildings. So here you see the entrance level, for example, for the um two-phase-one buildings, and in the base of all of these buildings, there is um retail, um uh, street-level retail. And so um essentially, uh, shopping is intended to be accessible and available to all of the citizens of New York and not specifically um uh directed towards the occupants of this um complex. And here you see the sort of central green space. And um again, what's most important for us is the kind of life that um this project will bring to the site and um the amenities that we will be able to provide of the space and um the engagement between the various um users, both within and without the project. And so the the quality and ambiance of the space is extremely important to the overall design concept. And so um we can talk a little more about um some of the detail, but essentially we're comfortable with the um landscape and tree requirements that um New York is um um required for this project, because um it is very much inherent in the design concept, which is um plentiful street trees and um plentiful onsite um uh trees as well, so that um there's um a good uh quality of environment established um on the site. Between these um buildings, you'll see um one-story raised um podium, and on those one-story raised podium are um amenity spaces for the occupants of the buildings. Um, just in terms of some of the kind of more um essential components, there is a fire access lane which transsects the site and provides access to all the various buildings um that Eric can speak more about um some of those details. And then in terms of the phasing, as Calvin has mentioned, um this is phase one, which is in the northwest corner of the south lot. And um the following phases are arrayed in Roman numerals around, first of all, the south lot, and then moving towards um the north lot in individual um building components. And each one of these phases carries with it the requisite um parking. In the case of the north lot, we actually will build some of the parking that's required for the latter phases in an earlier phase. Here is a ground floor plan, and in pink is shown the um anticipated retail um spaces on grade. And so you can see that the buildings are very much jacketed by um these retail spaces, and they're intended, again, as mentioned, to provide um and sort of an amenity and an extension to the um experience, the retail experience of the downtown area. In the light gray um color are the various amenity spaces associated with the buildings. And you can see that there's a dialogue between um the amenity spaces and the central green um and with each other across the central green. And so we're intending to have both indoor and outdoor um activities and um relationships across the entire site. And then going down to the first minus level of the parking uh with a driveway in from Division on this level and the various calls of the buildings coming down to this parking level. And we're anticipating that some of the drop-off and um requirements in terms of um deliveries as well. deliveries as well as car service can take place on this level. And the North Lot you see to drive in to um basically the various parking levels and on the, in this case, on the North Lot, the loading bays are arranged directly behind these buildings. And then as we proceed to the lower level with the access from Makata, there is a central loading area for the project and all of um these um components have been very carefully engineered with our traffic consultant in terms of the geometry of the vehicles um moving in and out. So it's both loading and also uh waste removal takes place. And the move in and move outs are also accommodated here with walkways that provide you um access to the various calls of the buildings above. So that um there is a significant investment made in the um infrastructure of the project and so that we can basically ennoble the the quality of the environment um above. Um and here we will talk a little bit about some of the detail regarding phase one. So essentially on phase one, the drive in is again from Division down to the lowest level of the parking. Here you see the first pair of buildings with amenity and retail space between them and the landscape above. So already in phase one, we anticipating building a significant amount of the emblematic landscape component of the final build out. And um in more detail, you see here again in the pink color, the commercial spaces wrapping and the amenity space in the heart of the pair of buildings with two entrances for the um occupants of the building, both on the north side here and on the south side here. Um um via a um arcaded walkway in each case and a link through between those two. So we are making in a way a city within a city. And this is the first building block of that um idea. And then the next level up, well, just to mention to you that um there are many different configurations that would be possible for the shops on the lower level, but we anticipate, for example, that we can have fifteen um shops on this level comfortably um located and divided in this way. And then the um on the level above the um uh amenity floor. And here you begin to see some of the um apartments. Each one is colored depending on its size and use and um that's really probably the most exciting aspect of the project is um the way it will be able to um accommodate a va- diverse community of people. And you know, we can make a canvas on which the lives of these people will be played out. And that for for us as architects is the most rewarding component. So here you see rooftop amenity, swimming pool, landscape areas and so on. And then as you move up the building, um the um uh buildings begin to step back as you get towards the top. And again, different um apartment types um organized um in different ways. And so the architecture of this project is not intended to be a kind of look at me architecture, but really um an accommodating one and an architecture which again um places emphasis on environment, on landscape, on open space and so on. And um as you move up, the buildings um become smaller and the roof. Um and then just looking down at the parking for a moment in phase one, again, you see the um calls come down, some handicap spaces being occupied um accommodated. Um there will be um uh electric vehicle charging stations, et cetera, et cetera, um parking space for um retail um users as well. And on the lower level, you see over here the substantial loading um and service bay, which is basically a core. And from here, people will be able to proceed into the various calls in the different ways um required. So just a three dimensional indication of the first pair of buildings with the link um between them. And again, in the base of all of this, it's a very substantial amount of um retail space. Um and um the requisite elevations. And so again, you can see that the architecture of the these buildings is intended to be um quiet and calm, but at the same time purposeful. And the joy of it all will be the accommodation that um they will provide to their occupants and the addition they will make to the city. And so here you see the um side elevations and um there is some indication of the signage um which we'll show a little more detail of the um other side elevation. And the building is extremely, the buildings are extremely systematic. And the logic of the overall site planning is carried through um to um the small details as well. Um and this is the elevation um of the two buildings as you see them from the central um garden. And um some details of the signage sizes and disposition intended to be effective, but at the same time quiet. And um just some detail of um the building facade. And you can see that the logic of joinery um has been worked out so that the horizontal bending, for example, resolves itself self in the um balconies. Sometimes it comes projecting eyebrows for the building with terraces above. The um tonality of the facade is intended to be a sort of spec- specular metallic material. And the main reason for that is that it picks up the color and light of the environment. And so the buildings will actually be very changeable depending on the time of day and the season and the adjacencies of the various buildings and the angle at which you look at them. And so they're intended to be um uh kind of not uh quiet and um delicate in their presence. And on the other hand, there's a sort of element of warmth that is brought in in terms of the tonality of the um window frames. And then again, just to remind us ourselves um that the the real essence of the project is the activity and the environment that we hope with your help to be able to create on this very important site. That's it. So I'm Eric.
Thank you, Ian. Uh at this point, I don't know if we have any questions from any of the planning board members before we move on to our.
That's my, that's my job, Mr. Souter. Are there any questions from the board? Commissioner James.
I have several questions. Um I guess the first, could you show me the specific pedestrian entry points? My, I I know you mentioned various um, you know, pedestrian access points, but I I wasn't clear on exactly where they were located um, you know, to the specific, you know, entrances of the buildings.
Yes. So I would like to note for the 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 record um I want to keep, I want to call you by your first name. But I want to re- want to just bring up that there is a significant amount of of commercial space. And so some of those entrances would would be due to change in in reference to the commercial space. Given, you know, someone coming in and taking a different lease. Um so that's one thing to be taken into consideration. Uh and I think uh given the questions that were asked, Ian, if you could direct your attention to the entry of the residential buildings, that would be great.
Okay, so so just to clarify, um council, so this is just for preliminary approval or is this is for preliminary final for like phase one?
Phase one is preliminary and final, but I just wanted to, we could show you, give you uh an idea of where the entrances will be for the commercial space. But as you could imagine, when you have a large commercial space that's fronting the street, right? Somebody may come in and take five thousand square feet. Somebody may come in and take twenty thousand square feet. That door may change depending on how much square footage. That was my, that was my only point.
I got you. Okay, I I understand. Okay.
Okay, so um Commissioner, the um in phase one, um we have um the arcade with the columns, as you see here, facing Division Street. And the main entrance for the northernmost building is um from this arcade facing um Division Street over here. And on the southern building, the similar sort of parallel um pedestrian access is from the sidewalk in this case um into this building. Um the sidewalk here flanks the light rail. And you can see that actually the light rail platform is in this location here, which we have accommodated and we're actually very happy with it as an as sort of neighboring adjacency. And then you see pedestrian pathways that lead from the sidewalk into the site over here. And um likewise, various pathways. So um the each of the buildings has a kind of clear and and um as Kelvin has mentioned, in terms of the retail, because it is street front retail, we are currently showing sort of a system of openings within each one of the thirty foot column bays. Um but of course, um that will be subject to the um actual lease out for those spaces. Um here you see a very spectacular shopfront opportunity facing the city, facing Broad Street over here, facing the light rail, as well as in the other areas. Um the um you know, the first floor is about seventeen and a half feet wide high. And so the retail is very generous and very transparent as it presents itself to the street. Um and on the north side, um if we take the northwest tower to begin with, the main entrance is often a plaza, a landscape plaza facing um broad with a bus stop in the foreground, the future bus stop over here. And then flanked um by various commercial spaces all the way around here with some plaza areas. Then the entrance for the middle building over here to its core and then to the east building likewise, it has an entrance and again all flanked by um retail. Um and in the southern most corner of the bu- of the site, this tower is entered from the garden side in terms of the pedestrian access over here. We have um commercial space down here flanking the sloping um access passageway. And um various amenities, as we've mentioned before. Is that an adequate um explanation, Commissioner?
Oh, yes. Um I guess my main focus was specifically on the entry point closest to the Broad Street Station. Um I'm assuming phase one is the closest in proximity to the Broad Street Station. So I was just wondering specifically, what would be the best, I guess, route? Um you know, between the Broad Street Station going to the entry point. And if there has been any conversations with DOT or transit regarding some of these uh
So, um the question of the pedestrian crossing for Broad Street has come up. And we have our sort of feelings, but we um have also participated in some conversations with other interested parties in this part of town regarding what would be the best way to achieve um pedestrian crossings um of to uh across Broad Street and the linkage to the Broad Street Station. That um your que- question is um of real importance to us actually because.
Ian, if I could jump in here, Ian, um Jermaine, I just want to, I was Commissioner, I'm sorry, the 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 what has been going going in this area for over a year and a half now audible uh in conjunction with the uh North Venture Partners have been studying this area, the traffic flow and a pedestrian pattern in this way. Our group has joined in those conversations so that all of that work doesn't necessarily go to waste. However, it did not contemplate this type of development when it was done. So in an effort to be collaborative, we are are having continuous conversations with that group and will continue to have them. Um and again, being mindful that the the partly why we're looking to just get phase one done right now is so that we can continue to try to address some of those issues as we move forward. But because of our redevelopment agreement with the city, it also kind of for pushed us to get before the planning board sooner rather than later so that we could, you know, show the city our commitments to actually getting into the ground.
Fully noted. Thank you, Council.
Question?
Yeah, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Chair?
Yes.
Commissioner Jordan, um how, when do you anticipate this project beginning? And and what is the length of like one fa- phase one, phase two at least?
I I'll take that that question, Ian. We're looking to break ground this uh this spring, uh spring of twenty twenty-two. Uh and each phase is between eighteen and twenty-four months to build out.
Thank you.
Do you hear, Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Oliver.
Yes. Didn't, did he say that the coloring of the building would depend on the lighting or something to that nature?
Um if I may answer the question, um I did say um that the exterior of the building would be made of a specular material, which is um a kind of a matte um kind of um material that actually picks up. It doesn't have much of its own color. And what it does is it picks up the color of the um surrounding environment. And so it's very um contingent, the way it appears is very contingent on um the prevailing light conditions, the angle of view, the season. And it's basically metallic material though, that you you will feel that it's a metallic material. But it's very much um like chameleon like to at least to some degree.
Well.
So it's, we've used this material on a number of um other projects. Um if you're, if the commission is interested, the Milstein Heart Center um at Columbia Presbyterian Hospital, which is actually pictured on the wall behind me, but um has that kind of material. It's quiet. It's just a very sort of soft looking material. It's is also used on the Jacoby Hospital complex that we finished um in the Bronx and um in in numbers of other projects. And we can certainly provide some um actual samples if the commission is interested. Take that off the walls. It's too hard. Okay.
I I have another question, Chair. If if Commissioner Oliver's finished.
Commissioner Jordan, go ahead.
The the affordable housing units, are they scattered throughout these phases or are they in one phase or another?
I will, I will, I'll take that question, Ian. They are scattered throughout the complex. Throughout all eleven buildings, they are are somewhat equally dispersed throughout the pro- project.
And you said that was two hundred?
Two hundred units, yes.
Like ten percent? Two thousand units, right? No, forty-two hundred units. I'm sorry. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for the board?
Can I follow up on that question Commissioner Jordan just asked?
Go, Chair, which?
Thank you, Chair. Uh with regards to the Thank you, Chair. With regards to the affordable units, we're looking at about five percent. Can we talk about the scale of the affordable units as compared to the market rate units?
They are pursuant to code and pursuant to all fair housing ordinances. They are the same exact size. They are dispersed throughout as to not isolate anyone to given their income. They use the same entrances. They use the same elevators in every building. They have access to all of the amenity spaces. Their units, their occupancy of this entire space will be just the same as any market rate person.
Attorney suit, I heard you say they're the same size. They're the same size as what? All the affordable units?
The one bedrooms, if, if it's an affordable one bedroom is of, of equal size and status or finishes and everything else, if it's a two bedroom or three bedroom, all the same.
As compared to the market rate units?
Correct. So if they go into a three bedroom unit, their three bedroom unit will be no different from a three bedroom unit for market rate. And the same is true of a two bedroom or one bedroom unit.
Thank you.
Commissioner James?
I'm sure I already know the answer that's gonna be told to me, but why is such a small percentage of affordable units?
I, I think so. If you look at it percentage wise, it would seem as though it is a, a small number. But two hundred units of affordable housing in and of itself, if, if, if you took that two hundred units and you, you would need a rather large piece of property to put those two hundred units. There's actually a lot of thought that went into the, the mix here in trying to make sure that we bought a different quality of housing into the city. And we made sure that a portion of it was affordable. And with a lot of affordable housing theory that went in, went into this particular project and not just a, a numbers game. There was also a discussion that was had about being able to do workforce development as well as to bring, you know, a focus on bringing jobs to the city for Norkers as well. So it was, it was a very complicated and long drawn out discussion about how we got to the five percent, as well as the payment that goes into the city and the training requirements that are all a part of this particular project. To, to be perfectly frank with you, we negotiated this ad nauseam with the, the city as we drafted a, a, the amended redevelopment agreement. So the, the two hundred became the right mix after we were able to spend a lot of time with financial analysts as well as theorists when it comes to affordable housing. That we got to a, a number that we think works and, and allows it to remain a viable project.
Is it fair to say that this number could, could change? Is it a variable based on the other eight phases that will come before the board in the near future? Or is this set in stone in terms of these affordable housing units?
This has already been negotiated with the, with the city.
Got you. Okay, so this, this number will not change. This, this is not a variable.
No, it is not.
Got you, okay. What, what about the commercial space? Do you see that changing due to the, the, the market climate and so forth? I know, you know, you have quite a bit of commercial square footage. Is, is that gonna change at all to your?
We do not see that changing. If you were to go into the redevelopment agreement, the, the the term that is used for the retail space is, is destination retail. So the goal here is to bring some higher end retail into the city of Newark. The hundred thousand square feet of commercial space was a sticking point for the city. So only way I see that changing, if the city comes to us and says that they want less. I'm sure less, you know, given the market, no one will argue necessarily against that for, for residential units. However, given the economics of downtown Newark and the desire to turn the corner, there was a, a, a big desire to make sure that in a development such as this, which we believe will be a game changer for the city of Newark, we'll, we'll bring in the, the, a, a new mix of retail and a walkability that we haven't seen in Newark. I mean, I've, I've lived here forty-one years that I've, I've just never seen before. That will come into, to the city on this particular development.
Any other question for the board?
Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair, sorry, if no other, another board members, yeah.
Mr. Barry? You saw me swear the testimony about to give this board shall be truthful?
I do, yes.
Thank you. Please state your name, address and affiliation, for the record.
John Barry, last name B A R R E E, business address two thirty-six Broad Street, Red Bank, New Jersey. I'm the planner for the board. I have a handful of questions, mostly just to, to clarify a couple of comments in my report just so that we have the record straight for resolution compliance at some point. Number one, Mr. Bader, do the units have washers and dryers, laundry facilities in them?
They do, and we will appropriately label them. They were shown, but were not labeled.
Great, thank you. Do you have designated space? And this is all pertaining to phase one, just for the record. Do you have designated space within the building for bicycle parking? And are you able to quantify the number of bicycles that can be stored?
We will have the spaces so designated and they will comply with the requirements.
Is any roof access proposed for tenants?
The, the access that we propose is for the roofs of the podia that connect the two buildings. At this point, we are not, because of the plentiful other sort of landscape space that the project is able to offer, we are not proposing to take the tenants specifically up to the roofs for recreational purposes.
Okay, since the, the roofs will not necessarily be used for accessible purposes, is there a barrier to complying with the green roof requirements in the redevelopment plan?
So the green roofs requirements is, is quite interesting with respect to our project because in fact, we have a tremendous amount of green roof, as you can see. Let's say take phase one, for example, because essentially the roof over the parking is a green roof. And that's, you know, tremendous investment in terms of cost. And then we have more green roof between the two buildings. And so we think that, you know, depending on how this is all calculated out and we did notice the, the numbers that you had in your report. We think that at least we comply with the spirit of the provision. And, you know, we are not completely convinced that it would be a huge benefit to have a, a kind of a maintenance rich situation on the upper roofs of the buildings. Because we already have a very maintenance rich and tremendous amount of green roof on the lower components where people can really experience those spaces.
Okay, thank you. I think that, that does make sense in terms of the spirit of the thing. Do you have any additional, there's quite a bit of amenity space shown in the buildings. And we've had stipulation that, that would be accessible to all residents, of course. Do you have any, any particulars that you can provide about what kinds of offerings there might be in those spaces?
And we do, and I can sort of recite some of them as I recall. And my colleague Christina Nambia can help me with that. But essentially, in fact, we have a list somewhere written. So we have fitness, we have games areas, we have swimming pools, we have fire pits, we have dog wash. We have, we have just about every amenity that can be imagined. Sorry, and we can get you the full list.
But you don't have to recite them on the record. I just thought it would be good for, for the board and the public to understand what, what might take place in those spaces.
We have, you know, shared workspace, meeting rooms, et cetera, et cetera.
And I had a question in my report about the access to some of the, is the, the central corridor through the, the phase one building, is that meant to be accessible to the public? Because it looks like some of the demised commercial spaces don't have exterior wall frontage.
Yeah, in fact, your, your comment was very well taken. And this, this piece here, this is actually an error. The commercial spaces will be accessible to the public from the exterior. And I think this is a more accurate, we actually made a correction based on your very sharp eyed observation about the demising wall that was incorrectly located.
Okay, thank you. Do, do you happen to have the, the dimension, the clear height of the upper garage floor? And whether it's, it's your testimony to give or another witness about whether garbage collection would take place inside the structure?
Yes, we can give you that clear heights. But, yeah, the clear height of the upper garage floor is nine foot six. And the clear height in the garbage loading area is fourteen foot six on the lower level.
Okay, thank you. And then two more, lastly, two more, yeah. The, do you have, have you quantified the number of signs? And this, just to get on the record, there may be some relief or waiver required. I don't think it's any issue particularly, but I just want to make sure your record is clear so you don't run into trouble down the line and have to come back to the board. But have you, have you quantified the either perspective or potential number of signs that would be proposed around the building?
So our anticipation, which we have not put down in writing yet, is that there's potentially one retail sign for each one of the fifteen shops that would be arrayed around the base of the building. Plus, and a building identification sign over each of the main entrances brings us up to seventeen. There's also, as we turn in our illustration, a building number sign which will be located on the facade facing Broad Street. And so, you know, in rough terms, it's, it's probably like twenty-three when we add a couple of extra ones here and there, maybe twenty-five.
Thank you. And then last question. Would you be able to just show probably the, the second floor plan that has mix of units and, and their sizes? And, and from your testimony, would you be able to give the, the square footage of some of the, the one bedroom affordable versus one bedroom market rate units and two bedroom, two bedroom, so forth?
Well, so the, the anticipated areas are indicated on the drawing as was submitted. And here you see the general areas. This is a two bed, bedroom affordable apartment, which is nine hundred and sixty square feet. And let's say a two bedroom market rate unit, which is nine hundred and seventy-six square feet. So the areas are a little bit idiosyncratic in the sense that the buildings are inflicted with the stepping in the plan. And so the, the sizes of the various apartments are not, you know, they're not exactly the same as you go around the, the building. And incidentally, the stepping in the plan is to make the profile of the building as seen from the street as narrow as possible and to sort of optimize the view cones out of the, out of the buildings. But the actual areas have been indicated on the, the drawings. You see here, two, the green ones are the affordable units. And here you see a two of nine sixty, two of nine twenty-nine. See, market rate two at nine seventy-six. So they, they kind of pretty much equivalent in, in rough terms without being too, too specific about it.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you.
If there are no other questions for the board, next witness.
Thank you. With that, I'd like to call our engineer, Eric Ballou.
Mr. Ballou, please raise your right hand. You saw me swear the testimony about to give this board shall be truthful.
I do.
Thank you. Please state your name, your address and your affiliation with this application.
Definitely. So it's Eric Ballou, E R I C B A L L O U. My address, my work address is at nineteen fifty-five Route thirty-four in Wall, New Jersey. I serve as a partner at Insight Engineering. I've been doing engineering for over twenty-six years. I've had the pleasure to work in Newark, but it's been on, on large warehouse projects and, and Lister Ave and Blanchard Street and, and also in Duremus Avenue. Besides that, I've done a lot of mixed use work within Jersey City, across the river in Harrison and Hoboken as well.
Chairman?
Your license current, sir?
My license is current and good standing.
You're accepted by the board. Please continue.
Thanks so much. So, so Ian took away all the good parts and now we're left like engineering things to talk about. But these are things that we, we definitely still need to address as far as the project. So some of the technical items were the walkway west. On Division Street was mentioned that we need a waiver for walkways. And we do provide twelve foot wide walkways from the curb line to the right away into the building. But the way the standard is written, it's written as twelve foot clear. So within the twelve foot from the curb to the building, we have four by eight tree planters as well as lights. So we have a minimum clear space in all areas of, of a minimum of eight feet in width. So we are asking for a little bit of relief to have a little bit of neck down on the clear walkway west on Division Street. Regards to site grading, you know, the site does, you know, range almost a twenty foot drop in elevation from where the light rail is to McCarter Highway. And across from that is the Passaic River. So there is a large grade change that architect has accommodated with this large plaza area that sort of pulls all of the phases together. The great part of, I have to say, was just unique for a lot of parts of town is that the Passaic River is about elevation, flood elevation of eleven based upon the preliminary FEMA maps. Even our lowest portion of the garage that's accessed off of McCarter Highway is at elevation thirteen. So this project is completely outside of the flood zone and above the Passaic River in regards to flooding as well. So we're in really good shape from an elevational standpoint. Stormwater management is always critical. We've addressed that through three different ways on this project. On the northern portion, which is basically, you know, on grade, more typical construction, we're able to do underground detention to reduce the runoff rates. And then on the, the plaza side, on the, the southern side, in that area, we're using a combination of green roofs that we spoke about to help reduce runoff. And then outside of the green roofs on the plaza are these, the pavers area. So underneath the pavers, we're actually going to be using a blue roof type system, which will actually store water underneath the paver areas to slow the runoff rates down to the fifty percent of the two year storm, seventy-five percent of the ten and eighty percent of the hundred year storm to address Newark requirements. We did have initial discussions with Newark Engineering on these concepts. You know, we did have discussions that we'll have to provide additional detailing and, and some additional calculations to show this, which is quite common when you go for a, a preliminary approval of something of this size. So we'll definitely work with them to obtain approvals. Water and sewer, I had a good conversation with, with AJ and we were able to talk through all the different components of this project. And what we showed on the plans was a, was a concept to, to, to address water and sewer. He had some alternate ideas of how it would be better to, to suit the needs of Newark. So in the future, we'll work with him to resolve all water and sewer components required for the project. As I've done in the past with even the warehouse projects that have these components also. Uh, through the the planning and engineering view, there was a lot of discussion uh on trees and the number of trees. Um, you know, on the depending on how you calculate it, even engineering and planning got slightly different numbers. Um, but our intent is is to to really try to increase the number of street trees and on street trees onsite trees increase as much as we can. And if we, you know, for whatever with the reason of the different types of construction type that we have, if we if we can't get to the grand total required by both engineering and planning, uh, we would pay into the tree fund uh to make up the difference. Uh, another uh large component which was just critical is illumination, uh, the light. Um, you know, our site, we really designed it mostly as an average of a half a foot candle of lighting. Um, but but through the review, it was really preferred for like the building entrances to have between three and five foot candles to really highlight them. Um, so we're going to look at increasing our illumination levels to to meet those um to the best that we can. Uh, they even the pedestrian areas, they say it should be a minimum of a a half a foot candle. We feel like they're, you know, looking at the plan, there's very few areas that are less than a half a foot candle. Uh, but we feel we can meet a half a foot candle and we'll do what they call a point by point analysis. Uh, so it's a more uh detailed lighting analysis to prove compliance with all of the pedestrian areas. Comment came up about uh lighting in the garage, uh, you know, lighting in the garage. I said I didn't submit a lighting plan for that. I thought of that as more as a building permit aspect. Uh, but now that it's requested to have a minimum of two foot candles within the garage, uh, we can supply a lighting plan to meet that requirement within the garage as well. Uh, sustainability, so that the Newark Rivers uh Public Access and Redevelopment Plan, uh, they did an amendment in two thousand seventeen to to it add some sustainability uh requirements for a project. Uh, one is open space, uh directly access from a public right away. Uh, the requirement is is ten percent. Uh, we've greatly expanded that. We're up to over forty five percent, forty six percent uh for open space that's strictly access. We exceed that. Uh, stormwater management, the fifty percent reduction uh in the two year storm, uh, we're going to address that sustainability. Uh, hardscape areas uh on the then within this, so they wanted to be pavers. Uh, so we will have pavers adjacent to the green open space areas on a plaza. Uh, electric vehicle parking is always important. Uh, so we actually require to have a hundred and twenty six electric charging spaces. Uh, we are proposing a hundred and twenty six charging spaces as well at this initial stage. Uh, but I will say it'll be interesting uh for what we're seeing uh for electric car charging station requirements. Uh, we I could see phase two or phase three having more charging station above these requirements uh based upon as we learn more from the the demand of the the residents. Uh, you know, there was a couple of items where um, you know, we didn't quite meet everything. Uh, one was the green roof of the fifty percent that Mr. Bader went through in great detail. Uh, we, you know, just for the for, you know, for now, as we do have over forty seven thousand square feet of green roof area over an acre. And what we really like about this project, we may not meet the fifty percent grand total, but we're actually taking the green space and really put it where the public, the residents and everyone can utilize that green roof area. So instead of putting it on top of a, you know, a thirty eighteen story building, we're putting it in a usable format, um, which is great. Uh, when you look at this plan, which is so amazing to me on this is that we've covered all of the park. So all the parking spaces are all covered, which is a a great practice in regards to water quality for stormwater management and obviously aesthetics and best use of the property. Uh, there is a thing, very uh green wall of three hundred square feet per building is in in those sustainable uh regulations. Uh, I I will say that that doing a covered garage, a fully covered garage has a you know, there's a lot of components associated to pull that off. So um, so we've gone with a standard wall system with vegetation in front of that wall, which is more typical of construction. Uh, the other one which is gray water system, say, they really would like to see reuse of of gray water uh reuse that as part of like the irrigation water and things of that nature. You know, when you have vegetation on top of a roof structure like this, we're we're very sensitive to that uh sustainability and lasting and if if something were to go wrong with a gray water system and it sprays the water all over the plaza area, the green roof, uh we would just be very nervous that something could go wrong and it wouldn't um look as good as it needs to look or if it had to be replaced because of a gray water mistake, we 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 would really request a waiver uh not for that system based upon the type of open space we have for this project. And there's solder that that's what I had from an engineering perspective. That's what I had on my list.
Thank you. Board, any any questions for the engineer? Hearing none. Next witness.
Mr. Chairman, I believe your 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 engineer had his hand up.
Oh, I didn't see it. Okay, Mr. Trafficant.
Yes.
Mr. Beck, let's get him sworn in.
This is Trafficant. You solemnly swear the testimony about to give this board shall be truthful.
I do.
Please state your name, your address and briefly your affiliation with this application.
It was Charles Trafficant, T R A F I C A N T E. I'm a principal engineer working for the city of Newark Department of Engineering. I'm also a professional engineer licensed in the state of New Jersey. My license is active and in good standing.
Wait, just saying, Mr. Trafficant.
All right. Uh, Mr. Blue, I I trust you had an opportunity to read the report today, December tenth from the engineering department.
I did.
Okay, are there any comments you cannot or will not be able to comply with in that report? And so to identify them, please.
I believe that we can work through all of these comments to the Newark satisfaction.
All right, that all right, fine, good. Uh, last point, there are several items. I believe under item two, Roman numerals four to ten, they require testimony. I don't know, Mr. Blue, if you can answer those or I don't know if you've got someone else you plan to defer them to.
So they would lean towards me. So these questions, I think, are regards to uh the various easement areas and fence encroachments and things of that nature.
Correct.
Um, so our plans are mostly are staying outside of all of the existing easements such as the twelve foot access easement. We're basically staying outside of that uh as well as the easement along McCarter Highway as well will be outside of that. Now, in regards to the retaining walls, uh, I got the corner of of the vision in McCarter. Uh, you know, that's something that I'll take a little bit of time to study, you know, what easements and and what uh items will be needed. I believe that's scheduled for one of the later phases on the project. It could be either eight, uh, seven, eight or nine. Uh, so that kind of comment was something maybe we would address through the glimmering final of that phase in the future. And the same with some of the other encroachments as well and some of the items that we may address more further detail as we get to certain particular phases.
That being said, these twelve foot wide access easement that surrounds lot fifteen oh two to the south as well as the uh temporary and permanent maintenance easement along the east side of lot fifteen oh one next to the public driveway and McCarter Highway. On maintain those.
We are. I I believe in the site plans, maybe it needs to be uh maybe clarified better, uh, but it was always our intention to stay outside of those easements.
And maintain them.
Yes, wha- whatever agreements are in place, we would, we would, we would continue on.
As far as the other encroachments, you will address that those at the time of of uh individual phase?
We we think that would be the most appropriate prime to do so to get into uh that level of detail.
All right. No further questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Trafficant. Uh.
Is there any more questions for the board? Next witness.
Thank you. Uh, with that, I'd like to call our traffic engineer. Lou.
I'm here, yes.
Mr. Luc, please raise your right hand. You solemnly swear the testimony about to give this board shall be truthful.
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, please state your name, your address and your affiliation with this application.
My name is Louis Lugio. It's L U G L I O. Uh, I am a licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey. Uh, I am with Sam Schwartz Engineering. We're located at thirty Montgomery Street in Jersey City, New Jersey, and I am the traffic engineer uh for the application.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is Saudi. You want to qualify your witness?
It's Luke. Can you go over your qualifications to testify tonight, please?
Sure. Um, again, I'm a registered licensed engineer in the state of New Jersey. My license is current uh and and other states. I have a bachelor's degree in civil engineering from New Jersey Institute of Technology, a master's in transportation planning, also from NJIT. I have served as an expert witness for NJDOT uh various counties and municipalities within the state of New Jersey uh and also on the private side. I've been practicing for the past thirty two years.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're accepted by the board. Please proceed.
Thank you. Uh, we prepared a traffic impact study uh that was submitted along with the rest of the application package. I think that is dated September twenty third, twenty twenty one. And so basically, uh, you know, this area of the city has been planned for redevelopment for many years. It has tremendous public transit ax- access and would continue to be a catalyst for development uh with respect to public transportation. Uh, as the board knows, there's not only the light rail, the heavy rail, but uh bus service uh that exists along Broad Street uh and the other side of Broad Street. Um, this proposed mixed use development is truly a transit oriented development uh with the access to the various transportation uh elements within a three to five minute uh walking distance. And again, depending on whether it's the residential um or other uh parts of this development uh that that transit service is available for all. And that synergy of public transportation with respect to the residential uh open space, retail and accommodations uh along with bicycle and pedestrian access and circulation is truly a balance uh that we're trying to create here with the vehi- vehicular circulation uh and speed of vehicles and acceptable congestion uh that that we would expect. Uh, this planned um project really truly is a balance of looking at vehicles going through the the intersections uh along the corridor, along Broad and others. And the accessibility and the safety of pedestrians that are going to be crossing uh Broad Street, uh not only for this project uh but but for uh the host of projects uh that are that are going to happen and that are planned or thought about in this section. We uh we looked at this in terms of access uh with respect to the north parcel, which is north of Division and the south parcel. Um, I think it's been talked about, but on the north side, obviously Division Street uh would be a main access point to both north and south uh areas. Uh, it is true that we are proposing for Division Street to be a two way roadway um at the intersection there to the right of Division and McCarter. Uh, what we would be doing is working with the city and NJDOT to provide for that to be a right in, right out from uh southbound Route twenty one onto and off of Division Street. Uh, we would also propose uh a median uh barrier, um maybe not a Jersey barrier, but certainly a raised area with delineators on it in the center line of Route twenty one uh so that prohibiting left turns uh going into Division Street, going northbound on Route twenty one and also preventing someone from leaving Division Street going towards Route twenty one to make the left turn going northbound. So uh that is something that we have some concepts and we would share that uh with the city and with uh state DOT. Uh, going back over again, still on the north side, um, we had always looked at having vehicular access uh off of Broad Street. And that would be also a right in and right out. Uh, and it would really hug just south of the railroad tracks. And so this would provide additional access uh to the buildings. I think the architect talked about loading areas that would be located in that area as well. And so again, just having another access point to complement the access from Division Street. Uh, we also would would have the same type of treatment in that it would be a right in, right out from Broad Street. And so a left out or the southbound, you know, left in would be prohibited. Um, you know, we we also in the past have talked about having a more uh physical barrier along uh Broad Street in the median. Um, perhaps similar to, you know, the treatment that exists uh the southern part of Broad Street, you know, near Raymond Boulevard uh where uh you would not, you would not be able to have it from the vehicular standpoint uh or pedestrian standpoint, so that pedestrian access across Broad Street uh would be at a a prescribed location. On the south side, uh the south side of the site, south of Division. Again, uh Ian talked about having the vehicular access point off of Division and then also having a right in, right out off of Route twenty one. We again would need a an access permit uh for that. That is something that we have started and we actually have started some uh preliminary discussion with the state uh about a right in and right out. Um, and in this location, depending on, you know, what the actual design uh looks like, again, it would also most likely require a treatment so that the prohibit uh prohibition of left turns, northbound left turns and uh southbound left turns leaving the site would be prohibited. Uh, with that, we, you know, we looked at a a couple of different things uh with respect to the number of vehicles that would be generated to and from the site based on the different phases uh of construction. Uh, the report itself looked at the final conclusion, the final full build development. Uh, we analyzed uh ten intersections going from Bridge Street to the south uh along McCarter over to Broad Street, uh all the intersections including uh the intersections uh on and off of Route twenty one and two eighty interchange and just north uh of the underpass on on Broad. So it's it was a pretty comprehensive look at the intersections themselves. Uh, we looked at the the number of vehicles that would be generated uh based on the different land uses. We've taken some credit for uh cross use residents that would use the retail. Uh, we we call that internal capture, you know, what happens on the site. Someone obviously wouldn't drive to go from one building to the next building. Uh, we also uh looked at and took credit for the different uh public transportation opportunities that would present themselves um to residents and and other users uh of the site in different uh phases of the total project. Um, and we basically concluded with there there's certainly uh some modifications uh that are required in terms of signal timings, uh some signal equipment and obviously the the bigger ticket or the bigger. And obviously, the the bigger ticket or the bigger splash types items would be conversion of Division Street to two-way and having some type of treatment along Broad for the access point to the north lot. For the most part, the intersections would operate similar to how they would operate in the future condition. I think we're looking at a twenty-thirty-seven build condition when everything would be built in in operation just to, you know, have some type of horizon end date for us to do the analysis from. And it would be very similar in terms of the the levels of service or the throughput or operations of those intersections. And and with that, I think that's pretty much a summary of what the report and the overall project is. We know that there's continued work to do with the city, with state DOT, and with New Jersey Transit with respect to access across and and connections to both the light rail and the bus stops that are located along Broad Street in both the northbound and the southbound directions. I think I think I covered it all, Calvin, unless I might have missed something, but I don't think so.
Thank you. Commissioners. Any questions for the traffic engineer?
Mr. Chair, I have a quick question.
Commissioner Good.
I just want to be clear, the testimony of the traffic engineer. You're accounting for the city installing medians on Broad Street to help manage your traffic?
No, what I what I was saying was that we know that part of either Broad Street in the overall development of other parties along with with our client and in connection with New Jersey Transit in in what they have thought about or planned for the station area. There's there's most likely some type of median treatment along Broad to really better handle pedestrian safety and accessibility across Broad Street. That's that's the main thing that we would like to participate in, especially with respect to the access point along Broad.
And if I could, Commissioner Good, and I I believe you may be aware of this, but Audible in conjunction with the North Venture Partners has commissioned a study and have put together a team that will be that right now they're proposing a change in the traffic flow. So although it it's not our project per se, right, we're anticipating that coming and that has some something to do with how we've gone about looking at our our traffic flow as well.
Thank you, Council. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Any other questions?
Mr. Chairman, I believe Mr. Traffic Conti would like to ask a question.
Mr. Traffic Conti, you're still in the oath.
Yes, Mr. Lou, I don't know if you had an opportunity to read our the memo from our traffic engineer, Mr. Savage today. If not, there's two or three points I'd like to ask, if that's okay with you.
Sure.
Okay. First, was there a consideration for a traffic gap study to ensure safe eastbound egress if Division Street is converted to a two-way street?
You know, we we did not do a gap study, but that's certainly something that we can do and provide that information to the city. I think that's something that DOT would most likely ask for. And and we were holding off on that a little bit, just so that traffic volume could get back to normal with respect to COVID. And so we would use a combination of historic traffic information or traffic data that we have and and do a gap study. That's something that we certainly can and and will do.
Also, my traffic engineer noticed that traffic volume diagrams in the traffic study are too small to properly review the study. Would you be willing to provide larger diagrams in order for our traffic engineer to be able to review?
Either we'll provide larger diagrams or a magnifying glass for Mrs. Savage. No, just kidding. We will certainly provide them so that that they could be scalable and and he could read them. Sure, certainly.
All right. And last point. Our traffic engineer requested, and I concur, or we concur, or engineering department confirms, the applicants developers shall provide an agreement with the city of Newark stating the property owner shall be responsible for all costs incurred for the evaluation, investigation, and upgrade of any potential improvements or additional traffic signal infrastructure signage and or striping due to impacts from the proposed development to include but not be limited to conduit, pedestrian signals, and camera detectors, et cetera. Is that something your client be willing to agree to?
I would like, well, before we give a blanket yes to that, as I stated before, there is a pedestrian walkway plan that has been commissioned by someone else. They are working in conjunction with us as well as New Jersey Transit, DOT, and the city as a whole. So I do think at this particular time, it may be inappropriate for us to say that we will provide an agreement when we are actively working in collaboration with the city to resolve some issues that were outstanding prior to this development coming into play. So I think it would just be premature for us to say, plus, the city's attorneys are not here for us to be able to say that we will, in fact, be able to enter into an agreement with the city. So I I don't think it would be appropriate for us to say whether we would or would not enter an agreement when all the parties to that agreement are not at the table. And again, I think what you're asking would be encroaching upon work that has already begun. So I I would like to reserve and and note that we will work with the engineering department, specifically the traffic division, to work out a plan that will work to ensure the safety of all individuals as they come to and from the site, whether vehiculally or via pedestrian, as as pedestrians.
And all the costs incurred doing the same, since we are.
Well, I won't, I won't, I I can't say that we would incur the cost because there are other parties who have already started working on the plan that is going to be of significant cost that will affect this. And and that is something that has been put in front prior to us. So we cannot agree to cost on something that is being negotiated by other parties at this particular moment.
Unfortunately, Mr. Souter, my traffic engineer in our office cannot find these plans complying with resolution until you do. So before you stick a shovel in the ground and start building, only to find out. There's a problem.
I'm confused as to what it is that we, I mean, you're you're specifically asking us to pay for something if I'm not if I'm not, correct me if I'm wrong.
Your development, that is the result of.
Right. So so I I think the reason why I'm taking the position that I'm taking, Mr. Traffic Conti, and and Dan, maybe you could help me out, that there's one is public space that you're telling us to pay for something. And there's a plan that's being put in place that has been being worked on for a significant amount of time, right, prior to us taking over this site and owning this site. So I think we'd be, it it'd be unfair to to say to our client to pay for something that has been worked on prior to us coming into this, that's going to affect everything that is happening here.
So if traffic lights have to be installed, who's going to pay for those?
Well, what happens, though, Mr. Traffic Conti, if the city agrees with another developer to completely change the traffic pattern on Broad Street that has nothing to do with our development, but then will require a significant amount of traffic lights to be put there? And and then we have this debate about whether or not it was needed for our development, even though it was planned a year prior to our development, even coming to a thought process.
Mr. Beck, can you help help us out here, please?
Well, you know, it's easy to say, can I help you out? This is a discussion that that and Miss Jordan, I understand your frustration and the rest of the board's frustration. This is probably a discussion that should have been had earlier between the council for the applicant and the engineering department. And both of them have issues that need to be addressed, but stuff that needs to be addressed not amongst us board members. This is stuff that, and and typically, I bring that to the board's attention on numerous occasions, that let's hash this out before it gets to us, because we're not the ultimate arbiters. You're not engineers, I'm an engineer, I'm not an engineer, I'm a lawyer, you know, and and you've got some substantial issues. You're talking about a traffic light, but then again, you hear testimony that, well, who knows what the traffic's can, traffic's going to be like when that engineer may or may not be needed. All I can suggest is what we've done previously, and Mr. Sata, correct me if I'm wrong, is that there be a caveat in the memorializing resolution that the applicant agrees to comply or continue conversations, et cetera, et cetera, with the engineering department to, you know, fulfill all the requirements that may or may not be required. I mean, anything that's required, end of story. You guys got to do it. But if there's, you know, a little bit of wiggle room here, some of this stuff should have been worked out beforehand, but it's not, it's before the board right now. Mr. Barry, maybe you can offer some additional insight as the 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 engineer hate to throw you under the bus.
Well, I like to, Mr. Beck, I would like to just note that we we did have a a conversation with engineering. I'm sure they would like to have more conversations. And we are beyond open to continuing the conversations with them. My only pushback is to say that we would agree to pay for something, understanding what we know is happening in the area right now. And there is a significant change that is being proposed by another group. So that's where my hesitation is, and that's why I'm offering that we do exactly what you just stated. We can continue to have discussions about what all of that is going to be and how that ultimately comes comes about. Before we get final site plan approval for this, I'm sure we will have worked those details out.
You're coming for for preliminary and final site plan on phase one. And this is a, this is a big project, and you're taking over a lot of area it over here at this location. So you know, I know there's a lot of projects going on, but you know, this is, if this is at your location.
Well, Commissioner, if I may, the 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 reason now, and and I think you know, as as often as I've presented, I I typically don't give this level of pushback. The issue that we have with this with this particular request is that there is a significant plan that is specifically dealing with the traffic flow in the pedestrian walkway in this area, specifically right at the Broad Street Station and at this intersection that we're talking about between Broad Street, where the the intersection for the entrance to two-eighty is right now, right? That that this whole area, there's a proposal to change that flow, and we're continuing to have conversations. Our request to ask that we can continue to have those conversations so that we can continue to work with Audible, so that we can continue to work with Rutgers, so that we can continue to work with the North Public Library, so that we can continue to work with the the folks who own the other buildings in the area to make sure that there is a plan that's put together that works for everyone, that is a complete safety plan. And although we're seeking preliminary and final on one portion of this, we committed in our earlier conversations to continue to have a conversations to work through that process with the city and its partners. But if we agreed to pay, that I I fear that we then would be agreeing to take that whole process over rather than working in collaboration, which I think would be in the best interest of the city.
May I chime in since Dan Dan did ask my opinion, John Barry, board planner?
Thank you.
Yeah, just real quick. So number one, I I'm not sure that that the board and as a planner, not as a lawyer, I'm not sure that the board has the ability to require an applicant to pay the entire cost of a public right-of-way improvement that will impact a number of other properties in the area. And I I think the fair thing to do here for both parties, all parties, is perhaps to have that language changed to be a pro-rata contribution to required improvements. So they would pay a portion of the the improvements if they are necessary, with understanding that there are other developments in the area that are going to benefit or require those improvements as well. So that's that's just my two cents on it. I don't I don't know that that we really have the ability to require a full payment for any particular public improvement that this applicant be placed on this applicant, knowing that there's a lot of other things in the world.
Thank you, Mr. Barry.
Thank you.
Take it under advisement. Are there any other questions from the board for this witness?
May I ask one quick question?
Sure.
Sorry, I lost Mr. Lilio. Is he still here? Did we lose Lou?
I don't see him, but while we're here, I would like to move the presentation that was done by the architect into as official exhibits. I would like to move it in as one exhibit if possible.
Council, please proceed.
I would like to submit a, as A1, the architect's presentation.
Don't move.
I I see Mr. Lilio's back.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I got I got kicked off.
I just have a quick question. I had a I had a question in my report about kind of the the short-term loading, pickup, drop-off, whether it's package delivery, you know, DoorDash, Uber Eats, that kind of thing, Uber, Lyft. You know, there's, it's a large complex, only some of the buildings don't really have great street frontage. They're more oriented on the light rail or on to the internal parts of the site. What what would the process be in in your vision for that?
So that that would all occur on the lower level of the podium that Ian talked about. We want to keep that all contained so that it it's all in one location. And so there won't, it wouldn't be any access for that along Division or along Broad. Everything would be internal to the podium area.
Okay. Do you have experience getting those services to kind of all get on board with those specific kinds of locations and making sure that things are tagged right?
So for for larger developments like this, yes, I mean, for for the project, let's see, in in Fort Lee, the modern and Hudson Lights, there are locations for that to recur, and that's within the garage structure. Or there's an internal street between the two that that's more of a a smaller street. And there's really no activity that occurs on the other major roadways that are there. So, you know, i- if it's a small development, then it's very tough to police and control. But something like this, we certainly can control it.
Okay, good. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Barry. Mr. Souter.
Thank you. With that, I'd like to bring on John McDonough, our planner.
Hi, everyone.
And is John McDonough your last witness?
Mr. McDonald, I only swear the testimony about to give this board shall be truthful and
truthful, yes.
Thank you. State your name and address once again, for the record. I apologize.
Sure. Hi, everyone. My name is Sean McDonough, M C, capital D O N, O U G H.
Mr. McDonough, you you've testified in front of this board many occasions. Your license still current, sir?
Yes, licensed professional planner, also nationally certified AICP.
You are accepted by the board. Please continue.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Calvin, take it away.
You go ahead, John. Do what you do. Wrap this up for us, please. I would greatly appreciate it, understanding that we are now two hours of just about into this whole thing.
I'll be very quick here. This is a project that is actually at the confluence of two redevelopment plans and just away from a third redevelopment plan here in the city. We've got the Riverfront Redevelopment Plan, which we know celebrates the river. We've got the Broad Street Station Plan, which celebrates mass transit and the transit amenity in the city. And of course, we're not too far away from the downtown redevelopment as well, which celebrates the downtown core. So we've got three redevelop- So we've got three redevelopment plans here that are actually being advanced, we're, we're into. And what's important is that this location here and this particular project that you see before you, again, the former Bear Stadium, we're looking at seven tax lots in the Central Ward, but all in block 26 and 27. It's a very nicely spacious, spaciously proportioned site, over 11 acres. And what the applicant is looking to do here is to transform this site and continue the very positive transformation of the, of the area. Just trying to move something out of the way here. Well, I'm gonna keep it on this screen, I apologize. Again, we're looking at a very beautiful project here that is going to be a very beautiful integration with the city and this very beautiful, this very beautiful area as well. And give it one more try at this share screen. I'm just gonna keep going here, so we're at the confluence of two redevelopment plans. We've got the Broad Street Station Plan, the Riverfront Redevelopment Plan. What's important is that we are in substantial compliance with both of those plans. The use complies, the density complies, the height complies, the coverage complies. The setbacks all comply in terms of minimum setbacks. The applicant is asking for relief with respect to the maximum setback. But again, that's in the interest of providing green space around the perimeter of the development. One of the beauties of this particular project is that it celebrates the natural environment, the landscape environment as much as the built environment. So not only is this going to be a transformative project in terms of the overall look of the site, but it's wonderful and beautiful integration with the area as well. The relief that the applicant is seeking is actually very minimal here. Two categories of variances that we're looking at. Excessive setback, which all relates to providing that green perimeter around the development and then integrating that central green space within the development as well. That again integrates with the surrounding neighborhood. And then the insufficient setbacks as well, whereby one cancels off the other. The setbacks would be in the interest of providing for adequate light, air and open space that is mitigated and interrelated to the fact that the open space is cooked into this plan with the exaggerated setbacks in the front. So one mitigates the other and forms the basis for that relief. The exceptions here as well are very minimal. We're looking for active ground floor space relief along McCarter, consistent with what we saw there, along with the Ball Stadium that was there as well. Minimal opportunity for pedestrian interaction on McCarter. So we've emphasized the pedestrian activity on the other streets. Also, you just heard through Eric's testimony, sustainability measures are, we're asking for relief on, but that's mitigated by the substantial green space that has been provided on this particular development. And then you just heard Lou's testimony, relief related to the curb cut on Broad Street. Again, in the interest of providing a development that will function safely and efficiently. All of this ties into what we call the flexible C balancing test in terms of the justification whereby the benefits of the application as a whole would substantially outweigh the detriments. In terms of the project positives here, we've got a number of core planning goals that come together on this particular development. Transit-oriented development, which is going to support our huge public investment in mass transit that we all pay for. This is going to provide ridership in that regard. Also, compact development, which provides an economy of scale that not only lessens construction costs, but gets translated to the consumer as well or the, or the ultimate resident. And then finally, the planning benefit of inclusionary housing as well, to provide for a diversity of housing choices here for all income levels, for all people, also consistent with a core goal of planning. We're going to provide new housing stock here, highly amenitized living environments. Again, that is going to provide very positive integration with the surrounding area. We've got positive aesthetics, I'll fall back on those plans that, and those images that Ian had provided at the outset, that this is going to be a very, very beautiful development. It is going to create a skyline, it is going to integrate with the skyline that is already there. And again, add a positive influence to the area, not detract from it. This is going to promote the planning goals for efficient land use. This is going to promote planning goal for a variety of land uses in appropriate locations. All of these tie back to our land use law. I could probably recite every purpose of zoning that this particular signature project would advance here. But in particular, in particular, we look at purpose A, the promotion of the general welfare. Purpose C, to provide for adequate light, air and open space. Purpose E, to provide for appropriate population densities. Purpose G, to provide for a variety of uses in appropriate locations. Purpose H, the free flow of traffic, fully conforming parking plan here. Purpose I, the promotion of a desirable visual environment. And lastly, purpose M, the planning goal for efficient land use. All of this is counterbalanced under the flexible C balancing test, whereby the benefits of the application as a whole would substantially outweigh the detriments. Based on all the testimony on the record by sworn licensed experts, this site will function safely and efficiently without any substantially adverse impacts on the neighborhood. Clearly, notwithstanding the relief the applicant is seeking, which is relatively minor in nature, again, will not create substantially detrimental impacts that would impair the intent and purpose of the zone plan and ordinance. All said, this is a very positive application from a planning standpoint. The lower design exceptions as to the active ground floor space, the curb cut, the sustainability measures, all meet that lesser standard of reasonableness and impracticability, which essentially means that literal or strict compliance would serve no practical planning purpose here. With all of that said, I believe this is a very positive application for the city, for the area, for the neighborhood, for the site, and with that, I would offer the statutory criteria for relief have been met here. The applicant has met its burden under the law and approval is warranted. That, I'll rest.
Thank you, Mr. John. Board, any questions?
Chair.
Commissioner Jay.
In terms of operations, has you submitted, I guess, a security plan? Or can you discuss the public safety plan or any, I guess, conversations with MPD?
I think I can have that, you know, we, we've had some preliminary conversations with public safety around access, being able to access the site. So what, what looks like a lot of green space in that middle area will be accessible to public safety vehicles, ambulances, fire vehicles, as well as police vehicles. So the property is very, very accessible to public safety. There are also some fail-safe measures that have been created in the case there's need, extra security is needed, some suspensing and things of that nature, which we don't necessarily want to, want to highlight the ability to be able to close off and lock down the site if necessary. But it does, the ability to do so does exist.
So you will have onsite security personnel in addition to, to, you know, knowledge and so forth, or?
Right, so, so pursuant to the city's security ordinances, in order for us to comply with saying, right, we'll have armed guards throughout this development.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioners, any other questions?
I have a question.
Go chair with you.
Thank you, Chair. Tony Sauter, can you explain some more about the ability to close and lock down the site? I know you said you didn't want to go deeper into it, but now I'm curious.
Well, as, as you see, the, the site is designed or has kind of a large green spaces that are there. There is a design for there to be an ability to, to close those areas with fencing if necessary. But the way it is set up now, it's a very, you can imagine, think of Branch Brook Park or Valentine Parkway, there's a fence that was created, it's almost a decorative fence. But if they needed to close off the park at that point, they, they would be able to close off that park. It would be very unusual that you would close such a large fence. But here, you, you'd have the ability to be able to do so if necessary.
So with those potential barriers, are they visible, are they gonna be invisible and?
Well, they're, they've, they've been built in a decorative way, so you'd be able to, to see them. But they would, they aesthetically, they, they fit into the whole development.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the board? Hearing none, are there any questions for the public?
Yes, we do have a few people, let me bring them in. The first person is Radek Kowak. Again, every member from the public gets three minutes. Please use this time to ask questions and not have a conversation with the applicant. Mr. Radek Kowak, if you can start your video and unmute yourself, thank you.
Mr. Beck, let's get him sworn in. Thank you, Mr. Kowak, you solemnly swear the testimony you're about to give to this board shall be truthful. You need to unmute yourself.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, please state your name and your address and your affiliation with this application.
My name is Radek Kowak, I work for the Labor's Local 3, 1122 Bristol Road, New Jersey, 07092.
Please continue.
Just want to say hi to Mr. Shoulder, because we, we talked before on different, other different jobs. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Yes, we can hear you. Before you, we will, you know, the person before, I believe, Mr. Ian, Ian mentioned the different jobs, so just want to, just want to just let you know that at the building first, for the job, we were talking about, we're talking about the 28 affordable houses out of 598 units. On the second building, we're talking about the 28 buildings out of 2598 units. For the building number four, we're talking about the 14 affordable houses, affordable housing units out of 299 units. Another building, we're talking about nine affordable housing units out of 189. Building seven, we're talking about the 15 affordable housing units out of 326 units. Building number eight, we're talking about the 30 affordable housing units out of 598 units. And then the last building, it's out of 616 units. I think so, it's, we're talking about the less than 5%. So this is one of my questions at this moment. Why we agree as a city to go to the 5% of the, of the affordable housing requirements when we're talking about the requirements for 20%? So that's my, that's my first question. The second question is, is the pilot program tax abatement is applied to the job? If a fee manufacturing is requirement for the job project? So if anybody could answer that question, could be very, very great.
I'm not sure if I understood the last question. You asked if there was a pilot on the job?
Yes, if the pilot, if the pilot program is applying for the job, it's at the same time if there's affordable housing, if there's a fee manufacturing is applied at the same time.
Okay, is that all your questions?
Yeah, the major one, it's why we, we as a city, we allowing, for example, 5%? It's not even 5, it's 4.7 instead of 20%. So why this developer who's saying this is the huge, no, huge, no, huge place and a developing, developing opportunity, just putting the below 5% of the affordable housing units to the job, why not 20%, one at 15%? Why?
So I, I can't answer for the city, so I won't. And there's, there is a pilot on this job.
The next member of the public is Louis Prezo.
Let's get him sworn in. Sighingly swear the testimony you're about to give to this board shall be truthful.
I do.
Thank you, please state your name, address and your affiliation with this application.
My name is Louis Prezo, I'm Director of Community and Economic Development with La Casa de Don Pedro, 75 Park Avenue, Newark, New Jersey, 07104. This supposedly public process is disappointing at best and embarrassing for the city of Newark. It's, it's, you know, members of the board, with all due respect, I'd be embarrassed to vote on this today after, you know, publicly announcing that this meeting and this project three days ago, your letters from engineering and planning are from the 8th and the 10th on, on a multi-billion dollar project, asking for pilots, 14 variances and only 5% affordable? You're, you're flouting the inclusionary zoning ordinance? This is ridiculous, not giving the public an opportunity to review these documents? You know, this, you should be embarrassed. I'm embarrassed, I'm embarrassed for you, representing the city of Newark, that you're actually thinking about granting final approval to this project tonight. This is a scam. There's been no public meetings. This ownership group hasn't reached out to any community-based organizations, faith-based organizations. We don't know who they are. You're talking to Audible about the traffic, right? About people crossing the street, that's all you're worried about. You keep talking about Audible, Fortune 100 companies and these, you know, billion-dollar developers without taking into account the people that live every day, who've lived in this city for the, for their whole lives. Okay, and you can laugh and smile, Mr. Sauter, I know you've lived in Newark, but you don't care anymore? You've been laughing, you've been laughing through this whole process, you know, having a good old time. And, you know, I, I would be embarrassed to try to push this through in this short amount of time. And I challenge the members of the board not to be taken in. Everything has been decided already, Mr. Sauter has said it on multiple occasions throughout this presentation, that everything has been agreed upon with the city, so why are we here? This is a sham process, if, if what he, if we're to believe what he said, that everything has been agreed upon, the 5% affordable, right? How many trees, all of that has already been agreed upon, what are we doing here? You wasted two hours of my life that I'll never get back. And you've cheated the people of the city of Newark with this sham process. Think about that before you vote tonight.
So thank you, and you're right, Lou, I've been here for 41 years of my life. I remember when La Casa de Don Pedro first started here. But I'm glad as La Casa de Don Pedro, you feel as though that focus is an organization that is directly across the street from this organization and that they have and that they have no say in the development that is happening there, or you may just simply believe that La Casa should be the only organization to have some say here. But there are differing minds and differing opinions throughout the city. This has been properly noticed here in the city. The people who work in the city have worked hard to provide the various reports, right? So quite frankly, I'm embarrassed for you to try to put them on front street in that way. Because as you know, I grew up in the city when that was the Lincoln Motel. When people were killing each other over here consistently and constantly. And now we're doing something that's going to be better for our city. There's low-income housing that is being built into this project. And we have made sure that we've reached out to all of our different community partners in this scenario. You may feel as though we didn't come and hold your hand, but there were community meetings. So you should speak to your councilperson, because we did go out of our way to make sure that we did what we were supposed to do and that we were going to do right by this community. So I'm embarrassed for the people of La Casa for you to come on here and assume that people aren't doing their jobs. You should at least give people the decency and respect that they've done their jobs. And I understand that you're a community organizer. I can respect what you do. As you know, I'm born and raised and continue to this day to live in the northward of the City of Newark. I drive my children across the city every single day to go to school in a Newark school. So I take issue with you coming at this project from that stand standpoint. Right? Because all I feel like you're doing right now is poverty pimping. And that's it.
Mr. Sauer, let's let's move on to the next public speaker, if we have any place.
Yes, we do. Um, the next person is a person with a screen named Dawn. Dawn, can you please start your video and unmute yourself? And you have three minutes to ask your question.
Thank you.
And your screen is upside down. Okay, let's move on to the next person.
I will, I I apologize that my screen is upside down. I'm not sure how to fix that. I don't even, that's never happened.
That's okay. Uh, please, do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give this board shall be truthful?
Uh, I won't be giving any testimony, but yes, Mr. Beck, I do.
Okay, thank you. Please state your name and your address and your affiliation to this application.
My name is Dawn Manning. I'm a resident and, um, I live at Ashby Lane in Newark.
Thank you, please.
A couple of questions. I'll, uh, just kind of run through them if that is best.
Absolutely. Go right ahead.
So the first question is whether the acquisition and development of this property is connected to any tax abatement for the owner? And I did hear a question from Mr. Cokes earlier. I didn't really understand his question, so I'm not sure if I'm repeating that question. I apologize, but I didn't understand his question. My second question is, what percent of Phase One is commercial and what is residential? I saw some numbers. I couldn't locate the paperwork for this project, so if someone could just give me the percentages. The third question was, has the owner or developer made any preliminary analysis as to what the developer considers as market rents in Newark for each size apartment? Because, uh, you know, in some areas, market rent is four thousand dollars and I pray that that wouldn't be the case here in Newark. Um, I think I'm at fourth question, the architect, and let me know my time, ma'am. Uh, the architect said that the affordable housing and not affordable housing bedrooms are equivalent in size and and so I just wanna know, wouldn't it be more accurate to say that the majority of the affordable housing units are slightly smaller than the non-affordable housing units? Um, the last, uh, another question is, has there been any discussion regarding the affordability of any amenities fees for those affordable housing tenants? And, um, just lastly, to, earlier, there was some discussion regarding the traffic, like cost signage, et cetera. And Attorney Souter seemed to be reluctant to commit to any, to his client bearing any expense. And although the board might not be able to require such an agreement, does this board have the ability to make a contingent approval or to just simply postpone approval pending inappropriate response so that we can ensure that the City of Newark doesn't bear this expense or unfair portion of the developer's expense? Two last comments, if you would just bear with me. Mr. Souter, I, um, I heard you and I heard you passionate comment, uh, to, uh, what Mr. Prezo said. Um, and as a lifelong resident, um, I'm a little bit older than you. I remember when that scene in one tenth of a mile. Um, I would only say, I I I felt what Mr. Prezo said. Um, I actually agree with much of what he said, not everything, but some of what he said. I just want everyone, including you, I I did notice some, um, joking and familiarity, and I know that you all know each other, but I just ask that everyone treat this process with the respect that it deserves for those of us who are new to this whole board thing. And thank you very much for allowing this, me this time.
Thank you for your detail, detailed questions.
Right. Can I, can I, Ms. Dawn, can I ask you to repeat your question about the tax abatement? Because I I was unclear. I just wanna make sure I answer it.
Uh, is the acquisition and development of this and or development of this property connected to any tax abatement for the owner?
Yes, it is. Um, I don't, I can't answer the percentage of the building space versus the residential for Phase One. Um, so my, my architect or engineer may be able to answer that question. Uh, oh, here it is. It's three point eight percent of Phase One is commercial slash amenity space.
Just commercial.
Just commercial, not amenity.
Oh, that's just commercial. I apologize. Just commercial space. Um, has there been a preliminary analysis of as to market rents? Uh, yes, there has been, uh, in the, the question of affordability of the amenity space. Uh, I'll, I'll let the, the owner speak on that later. Uh, but the pro forma, as we have it now, there is no charge, additional charge for the amenity space. Uh, I would say to you that blanketly market rate here, uh, and and I've seen some you, some units in the downtown area go for four thousand dollars. I I think I know specifically where you're talking about. Uh, the, the vast majority of the analysis that we've had in this, the, the vast majority of the units here would fall within the eighty percent AMI rubric, uh, for the City of Newark. Right? So you're looking at, at most, uh, in the mid two thousands for some of the larger units that would be also, you know, much higher up in, on the market rate side.
Thank you.
And, and Ms. Ms. Dawn, I would like to say to you and to everyone else, I do apologize for, for speaking the way that I, that I spoke. But again, I am a Norker, so a lot of this I am very passionate about. Not simply as an attorney who likes to win, but as a Norker who hopefully my children will inherit things from me that are part of this particular city.
With that, Attorney Souter, I hope you're working on some projects that are going to bring, uh, residences that folks can own, like your children, um, as opposed to rental units as well.
Throughout the city, we are working on those projects as we, as we talk.
Thank you. Thank you all.
The next person we have is a person with a screen named John G. Um, just a note, if you are joining us by phone, please press star nine if you have questions.
Good evening. Evening. Uh, please raise your right hand.
Thank you. You solemnly swear the testimony you will give is truthful?
I do.
Thank you. Please state your name, your address, and your affiliation with this application.
John Goldstein, one seven one, Dan Buren Street, Newark, New Jersey. And I'm a concerned citizen. So, uh, sure. Um, so, uh, one bit of, I have a series of questions. One is a clarification, just to be certain. Uh, is this a new application? I'll come back, I'll repeat the questions at the end, uh, as well. Um, do we just need to know on the record if this is a new application or if someone's interpreting it as, uh, an older one? Um, the second, uh, issue is the affordable housing issue. Uh, the mayor has said very clearly that he wants to create or preserve at least six thousand affordable units for low-income residents by twenty, uh, twenty twenty-six. Uh, if, uh, we follow the provision, the provisions of IZO for this entire project, that would get us eight hundred and forty units, which is, uh, really significant and would help us move on the way towards uh, reaching the mayor's goal. Uh, two hundred units for a project this size, I I don't think there's any, uh, way that, that, that will help mitigate not only the existing affordable housing crisis, but, uh, the pressure on rents going up from this project with so many market rate units. Uh, I also wanna go back to this question of the affordable units that are described. And I hope someone will actually point out to us exactly in Phase One where the affordable units are. Are they on higher floors? Are they on lower, lower floors? Do they face the river or whatever? I, I think that's significant to know. And finally, there's this question of community involvement. For a project of this scale, I would think that there would have been, uh, public meetings. Now, I, I know Attorney Tudor said there have been lots of public meetings and meetings with groups. I, I paid pretty much, uh, attention to, uh, all of these issues in Newark. And I certainly was not aware. I wasn't even aware of this project. I read about it in the newspaper. So, uh, I, it, it really, this is a huge project. It begs, uh, huge public engagement. So the three questions I wanna repeat are, is this a new application? Where are the affordable units located in this building? Um, and, and, uh, can this approval be contingent on having a series of public meetings? This need, this desperately needs to slow down. We're stakeholders. We're gonna be investors in this project with tax abatement, infrastructure that was mentioned today. And as an investor and a stakeholder in this project, I think we deserve a seat at the table, not just here, but in stepping back and having significant public input into the nature of the project. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I I like to note that this is a new application, so this is a, a, a new scheme than what folks had previously seen in the past. Um, this is a largely overwhelmingly residential project now, where the other project was a much more of a mixed project with some, um, some very, uh, some, some very hopeful buildings built out of materials that we just don't really use. We don't use for buildings of that stature, status here in the United States. Um, the, the first section of, the first phase of the building will be built in a way that there may be some view of the river, uh, but if you recall and look at the overall schematics, the, the first phase of the project, um, won't have nearly as much of a river view as the rest of the project, specifically the back section of buildings. Um, the, the, the affordable housing is scattered throughout the, the buildings and the phases. Um, and as, as far as, you know, public meetings, as I noted, we, we've had public meetings. And when it comes to, I, I would like to note, it's my understanding, and someone could correct me if I'm wrong. I believe folks from the, the city's planning office have been involved in these conversations. Uh, but when you talk about the payment of the infrastructure changes, I believe the rubric that is on the table now would not cost the city one penny. That it is a collaborative effort that all of the partners are coming together in that area to pay for. Uh, which is why I gave such pushback, because they're, they're working on this and it would not cost the city a dime, one way or the other. Um, and, and maybe Chris Watson, the city's planner, could, could speak on that particular piece. Um, so I, I think, I think I addressed all of your questions there.
If I could follow, can I follow up? I don't think you addressed the questions at all. I, I would like to see where on the plans for Phase One, where are the affordable housing units in that one building? Not scattered through the development, but where are they?
Okay, um, so if there are a set of plans that the, the city has, I believe if you go to the city's website, you'd be able to pull up a link, uh, and in the Phase One, you'd be able to see where that, where all of the housing is located.
Um, let me interject, um, vice chair, which are speaking. We, do we have access to the schematics right now?
Uh, I, I believe so. Um, Ian, do you wanna pull up the Phase One? Uh, the, and the board secretary just put a link to the, to the site plan application in the chat as well.
I see that for the purpose of this conversation and in the public participation, I think that it would be important um, to address this because, um, the question's been asked more than once.
So I've, I've asked the architect to pull it up.
Thank you.
It's coming up now.
We can't hear anything.
Ian, you have to mute yourself. Beg your pardon. I'm sorry. Okay. As Calvin had mentioned, the Phase One is in the northwest corner away from the riverside. And so this is specific idea of river views is not really, um, being engaged in terms of the apartments. In terms of the overall architectural idea of these buildings, the, um, um, the arrangement is that we have maximized the views between the buildings. And, um, it's a kind of an urban situation over here. And so, um, we're actually concentrating, um, views north and south rather than at the river specifically because what we are trying to do is make a living environment of the highest quality, um, that we can. So in terms of, I don't have all the floor plans right now. Um, I can show you, um, the level of
Yeah.
Uh, this is the level of the podium level, and you see indicated over here the affordable units as we had identified them, but there is obviously flexibility in here, but we had placed them, um, facing the garden side over here. Um, and on the upper floors, I guess they distributed. I don't have those plans with me. Um, we just get the very top. We can find them if you would like, but, um, um, if you hold on one moment, we'll get them. Okay, it's just take a little while for us to, um, have them. But basically, if you, um, consider, um, the overall site plan while we're waiting for that, essentially all of these buildings basically look at each other. And so, um, you know, the views for all apartments are basically essentially at each other with, um, sort of inflections to encourage views beyond. And so whether you're on this side or that side of the building doesn't make a whole lot of difference because fundamentally there are a series of buildings, um, facing each other. And, you know, our, our view is that, um, we're making a beautiful environment. And that's what we expect people to be looking at and enjoying. It's an internal environment that we're making over here. Sorry, maybe we should proceed with another, um, aspect. And when we get the other drawings, we can, um, put them on the screen. Okay.
To take them because they're in a much bigger document.
Okay, they're, they're part of a much larger document, which is not sort of set up for presentation. So we're in the process of extracting them now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I'm not sure if you want to move on to another question while they go to pull up that.
I, I have, this is John Barry. I have the submission set pulled up. If you want, I can share them on my screen and Mr. Bader can talk over them.
Sounds good.
Okay, otherwise we'll be, we just a minute off, but, um, hold on one second.
At this time, I just want to remind the public that if you're joining us by phone and have any questions, please press star nine. Otherwise you could use the raise hand feature and we can bring you in to ask the question.
Ian, why don't you stop sharing your screen so John can share his?
Let's use yours.
Okay, so here's, um,
okay, this is.
So this is level, level two, correct?
Looking at, yep.
Okay.
You just keep going up.
Wrong way. There we go.
Okay, and so you'll see again, um, the gray green and the units of the affordable units.
This is levels three and four, correct?
I believe so. Okay, John.
Okay, and then.
Okay. Okay, so those are the units that had been identified in answer to your question.
Did we see that, uh, position of the units moved from the third floor to the fourth floor? Were they in identical spaces when we moved from the third to the fourth?
Third and four, I think are identical.
Yeah, third and fourth are identical.
Who else is speaking?
All right, it's, it's okay. Um, three and four are identical.
Thank you. Mr. John G, is your question answered?
Yes, thank you very much.
Thank you.
At this time, there are no more questions.
Thank you.
Counsel, does that complete your testimony?
That, that does complete my testimony. Uh, if possible, I would like to, but, but before we go into discussion, um, if, if we could yield the floor to the owner of the property or owner representative, Mr. Klugman.
Hi, I'm Jack Klugman. Um, I don't know if I have to be sworn in or not.
Yes. Mr. Club, Mr. Klugman, please raise your right hand. You solemnly swear the testimony you're about to give. This board shall be truthful.
A hundred percent, yes.
Thank you. Please state your name, your address and your affiliation to this application.
Uh, Jack Klugman, um, the owner of the property. My address is 32 Core Street, Lakewood, New Jersey. And, um, I just wanted to, everybody that spoke before me, uh, the lawyers and the engineers and all the professionals think they really did a great job summarizing it. I just wanted to, and I hate speaking, so I just wanted to say, uh, before we come to close, how much time and energy we put into, into this project to match and to add to the great city of Newark. Um, I grew up right next door and I didn't grow up in Newark, but I grew up right next door to Newark. And, um, I do a lot of development and out of all the projects that I'm doing, this is, uh, I could say this, my baby, and this is a project that I'm really, really proud of so far, the work that, uh, we've been able to accomplish. And the, and, um, together with the work that we're gonna have to accomplish. This is a, it's gonna be a, a destination in a, in the greatest, uh, largest city of New Jersey where people are gonna be coming, uh, uh, flocking to and running to, to be a part of because we're gonna have great amenities and great, um, and, and great access, as we all know, and, uh, together with all the great things that the city of Newark has. So I just wanted to share my excitement that I have for the project and, um, let everybody know, uh, I, I will be here. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Jack. Uh, Mr. Chairman, all of our testimony is completed. Uh, I believe it is, is back to, to you and, and your team.
Commissioners, do any of you have any questions for the developer, for Mr. Klugman?
Uh, Chair, I have one question.
Commissioner James?
I, I believe this was already discussed earlier, uh, so forgive me, but what, what were the proposed market rates, uh, for the studios ones and twos?
Um, any, anywhere from mid teens, like fifteen, sixteen, seventeen hundred dollars to mid to $2,000. Depends on the unit, depends on the size, um, depends on the market, where the market's at. We're, we're not looking, you know, the way we designed this and what our thought process was, was just so I understand. Everybody knows what's going on across the river in Harrison. Um, I'm not a developer in Harrison. Um, I'm a developer here in Newark and I want to be a developer here in Newark because I, we feel, or I feel that, um, we have, as in, we have everything that they have plus a whole lot more. So the way we designed this is to, to offer significantly more amenities than what they're offering there with being significantly cheaper than what they're offering over there. So we're offering a, a project that will be below the rate, the rents that the neighbors are charging, yet will have a far superior product.
Thank you. Good luck.
Commissioners, are there any other questions, comments, concerns for the developer?
Um, Chair, so move.
Thank you. Every second.
Second. It was seconded by Purdy, Commissioner Purdy.
Oh, third.
Give me one second. I'm sorry. Motion made by? Seconded by Purdy?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay. Commissioner Good?
Yes.
Commissioner Jordan?
Yes.
Co-Chair Victor?
Yes.
Commissioner Purdy?
Yes.
Commissioner Timmons?
Yes.
Commissioner James?
Yes.
Commissioner Oliver?
Yes.
Chair Richardson?
Yes. Yes.
Application has been approved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
Thank you very much. Have a good evening. Thank you all. I appreciate it. This is transformative for our city. Thank you all very much and have a good night.
Mr. Beck?
Um, uh, there's a review and approval of minutes, uh, this shinday?
Yes. Has everyone had a chance to review the minutes from the last meeting that were emailed to you? I guess, yeah.
Yes, so moved.
Hold on.
Second.
Hold on, who, who made the motion? Sorry.
Commissioner Good. Down.
Seconded by Jordan.
Were you, were you downstairs? Commissioner Jordan, you're not muted.
Um, we don't have any resolutions, do we?
The only resolution we have this evening is the first one, which was the courtesy review.
Okay.
Um, which was CPB 2191, which was 695 DS 715 Burton Street. It was a courtesy review, uh, Newark Police and Fire Training. Those commissioners have voted affirmatively to memorialize it, are, uh, permitted to memorialize same. And that's all I have before this board.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Motion to close?
So the next, um, the next hearing is, um, December 20. Okay, I will see you. We will see you in December 20.
Good night.
See you next week.
Good night. Thank you, good night.
Bye.